I shouldn't have ever asked him about the speakers.
He's a good speaker.
Why is that not even speaking to me? He listens, but he is really good though.
Oops, jinx.
I jinxed it.
Thank you, and now we are live. Call the November ninth, two thousand and twenty, City Council Committee to hold the order. The clerk will call the roll.
Arivolo?
Present.
Furerton?
Here.
Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Present.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Radcliffe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present.
Full house, good deal. Under public comment tonight, I just wanted to make an announcement. There is not going to be a Veterans Day parade, but I talked to Commander Kelm today. They're going to have a small intimate service at the VFW at ten o'clock on Wednesday. They really don't want a whole lot of people to show up, but he did extend an invitation to the alderman if you would be so inclined. Under public comment, we have none this evening. Under public forum, there is none this evening. Under reports of officers, boards, and special committees, under item number one, building, planning, and zoning unfinished business, there is none. Before we get to new business, I was going to ask the council, I will ask the council. We have our, Tim Knopf here to present our presentation for health insurance. Since he got stuck at the very end of the agenda, would it be okay with everybody if he went first?
Oh, yes.
Show of hands. Everybody at home okay with that?
Oh, you have a vote.
Okay, Tim, you have the floor.
Jumping the gun there for a second, sorry about that. Good evening, everybody. Look, we're gonna turn that on. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Good now? Good. So, this renewal process for this year was slightly different than we've had in the past, and I just didn't look here a little bit earlier, I think, in the year than when I normally am. Usually I'm here more towards the end of November presenting to you what our findings were. And typically, every year we go to market and look at other carriers and what their costs are in relationship to your current program that you have with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And this year, because Blue Cross came back with what I would consider kind of amazing type of offer for us, we did not necessarily go to market because last year, all the carriers that we bid were higher in relationship to last year's renewal when we had a rate adjustment, I think, last year of, I'm just gonna pull up here really quick just so we have it, of two point one percent. Everybody was higher than that last year in two thousand and twenty. And so this year, they came back and they not only gave us a decrease in the rates, so we're having a one point nine percent decrease in that rate, but on top of that, they're giving us a two-year rate lock. So what that means is for the next twenty-four months, we have that one point nine percent negative over what we experienced in two thousand and twenty until one-one of two thousand and twenty-two, then we'll have to deal with that again. So, I only have about maybe a hundred clients with Blue Cross, maybe a handful that are getting a two-year rate lock, and I don't believe, hardly have anybody that's in a negative rate relief from that standpoint. So, good news from that standpoint. In fact, I was telling the mayor earlier, I think probably I maybe had a dozen negative rate adjustments on group insurance over the last ten years, so this is kind of good news from that perspective. So, the plan design is staying the same, the services staying the same, the networks are staying the same, so there are no adjustments or differences to any of the employees from the city of Delta here whatsoever, just that the costs are gonna go down and they're gonna be locked in for twenty-four months. So that's the medical plan in and of itself. Then we also have the dental plan, which I think is also in the packet. The dental plan, we've been self-funded for a number of years, and again, this year, like last year, the dental vendor that's doing the self-funding administration has forecasted with regards to claims and their services that our rate adjustments for next year will be zero. So we have no rate increase for two thousand and twenty-one on our dental plans. So basically, reduction in rates on medical, flat on dental. And just to give you a little perspective, just to have history as far as the city is concerned, so your rate adjustments, the last three years, the average increase has been two and a half percent over a three-year period. Over a five-year period, four point six percent over a five-year period, which cost the healthcare inflation by eight to nine, so we've been battling that and doing much better than what the benchmarks are out there in the marketplace from that standpoint, just so you can get an idea of relativity from that standpoint. So, other than that, I don't have a lot other to report. I thought it was pretty good news, and I thought I'd share that with you guys tonight.
So, I would entertain a motion to approve resuming our relationship with Blue Cross Blue Shield for our healthcare and dental insurance.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Alderman Stevens. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
I have a second by, from Alderman Reblow. Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
Questions? Yes.
Yeah, Envision, they still do our secondary pay out for, yeah.
Yes, correct. So that's staying in intact, there's no adjustments to their service or cost for administration as well.
Because my wife's complaining about how slow they operate, and we get nasty letters from our doctors, and then we pay the whole amount, and then within a few weeks, we're getting all the money back.
So it's a timing issue. Yeah, so, and that sometimes happens twofold. Number one, maybe from the provider sending the process to Blue Cross, and Blue Cross sending that to Envision, because you don't know the delay tactic as far as Blue Cross sent it into Envision to get that process. So, and part of this, probably she just wants to get the bill paid, the provider sending her an invoice, and she wants to get it off the chair, right?
Oh, no, we get that nasty little letter that if you don't pay the remaining balance.
I see. So in that case, in the event that you have something like that, you could certainly bring it to administration here, and then they could get it to us, and we'd call that provider on your behalf and tell them to slow down.
Yeah, it's all, it's all the people that we deal with.
We have no problem with do that. I've been doing that for thirty-two years, so if people have those issues, you can certainly use our services to help you through that process. That's not a problem.
Okay, I'll let my wife call you.
Yeah, that's fine. Not a problem.
The other thing too is, do you ever, have you ever logged in where you can get online and look at the Envision? Because I find that really helpful, because then I can see exactly what Envision has paid out and what I still owe. Because it's the same thing, where you get a bill and you're like, okay, has Envision paid any of this yet or not? You know, it's one of those things where it's a little game, but if you can get online and look, or your wife can, that can help some of those issues too.
And she can get, or you can get my cell or my number from Sarah, but if you need to. I'm more than happy to help you, but not a problem.
Okay.
Some certain.
Alderman Frank, did you have a question?
Well, I was just gonna ask Becky, if we're locked in for twenty-four months, do we still have to enter, come back next year to okay this?
That would be up to the city attorney if we need to come back for any annual increase if it's left. Right, so I guess we wouldn't need to.
No, you didn't? Okay, yeah. Two-year rate.
Would Envision be two years also then?
No, but my experience with Envision has been that they have not come back with the price adjustment in their process for at least five years. So I'm thinking they're pretty static. In the event that they did come back to something and it was any adjustment whatsoever, we would certainly take a look at it, determine if there's still the viable player for moving forward. And the nice thing about Envision is that they have the electronic feed where you go to the provider, the provider sends the bill to Blue Cross, Blue Cross sends you an EOB at home, and they simultaneously send an EOB to Envision. There's only four carriers in Illinois that have direct feed connections with Blue Cross to do that service, Envision being one of those. Or otherwise, if we hired a different service outside those four, it would require the employees to turn the EOBs in, which is what we had before with Williams Manning, you know, about three, four years ago, right? Where they turn them in, we'd be reverting back to that process for the employees. So, but we'd be mindful, and then we'd look at those other three vendors that still have that direct feed in relationship too. So, this would be a unique year. I mean, the last, every year, we bid your plan to all the major players, and every time that the rates were in a positive scenario, we did that. Even when we had one-tenth of a rate increase percent like two years ago, we went to market. Because it was negative, this is the first time that we didn't really go to market because it was negative, and last year, it was higher than the two percent, so they'd have to fall back five percent just to beat your numbers, and then probably have to fall back ten or fifteen percent for you to move from the service and the doctors and the customers as far as the plan design to make all of your employees happy. So that'd be a significant change in their pricing mechanism to make them competitive to Blue Cross for your program.
Okay, any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Furerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
So, the motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Knopf.
Thank you, thank you.
It's delightful to see you again.
Have a great holiday season. Appreciate you taking your time.
You too. Which brings us next to number two, building, planning, and zoning, new business. We'll have a planning and zoning update. Gina?
So every month, you guys should get a monthly report. If there's ever any questions over, don't be afraid to contact me. Someone's gonna highlight it real quick. So for cases, our zoning cases have been found this year, not a lot of, especially because there's only annexations going on. That does not mean we're not meeting with potential developers. I know at the bottom of the report, I always have the generic, "Met with developers." I don't go into specifics, because a lot of times developers don't want the specifics put out there. That doesn't mean that you as aldermen don't get to know, they just don't want it blasted at a public meeting, more in a private conversation. You know, don't be afraid to call me, saying, "What developers did you meet with this week? What potential project?" They just prefer the private conversations versus a public meeting, and we want to respect their wishes. Site plans, so if I'm doing a site plan, that means that's a job or a project that's going through their building permit process. Sometimes it's just one site interview, sometimes it gets revised seven times, you just never know. So Anderson, you know, let's remember back in two thousand and seventeen, they got a plan development to expand an attic inventory. They're still going back and forth, they've now, like, their first set of designs, it's been changing a lot, so they're trying to get to work with the castle. The car wash on Rock State Street, I know Alderman Snow has questions about that. We've got our endearing plans, but not our architectural plans, so this will be a site plan that you'll see again, because you still need to review their architectural plans or many of them in phases instead of college ones. Nineteen forty-three, that is the old Hattie Walk. Couple, four months ago, have an open tanker with the variums for pavement setback, and for outdoor catagories, Hattie Walk, that's because he's planning on putting a new restaurant there. He's also looking on a restaurant, which he thought was stuff that he's been bouncing around for a while, but now that Rock Valley is coming, kitty corset on him, he's very excited about that, and wants his stuff in place before all the students drive past him on a regular basis. So he's definitely a local business that's going to benefit from Rock Valley. So, yeah, he'll be reviewing his restaurant stuff right now. Downtown overlay, most of, so in the downtown overlay district, I have to review their aesthetics, make sure that they're not ripping in windows or altering the building. Most of the time, it's just signage. So if you see a sign on here, that means it's a new business coming, and they're putting up a new sign that got reviewed. So that's always kind of a heads up, add a potential new business coming to downtown if you see a sign new deal. Zoning letters, usually I do one or two a month, I've been averaging nineteen eighty-seven. Zoning letters are something that banks require. Prior to recession in two thousand and seven, banks couldn't care less what you don't, what you're doing, if you wanted a mortgage, they gave it to you, they weren't really concerned about their investment. Then the recession hit, now they're very concerned. They won't grant a mortgage unless they know that that use is illegal use and can be continued, because they don't want to give you a mortgage on something that if it gets damaged, fire, what have you, you can't rebuild because it's a bad mortgage. Grant holders of duplex for sale, commercial, industrial, if they're wanting to buy it now. So if you see addresses listed under the zoning notification letters, those are on the market, meaning someone who trusts is purchasing them and the bank's doing their diligence. So the fact that we have so many letters requested shows that properties are really moving quickly on the market. They're selling a lot more because there are a lot more requesting things, which is a business. Historic preservation, as you know, they do fundraisers, they have their property maintenance grant, they just reversed both of those projects. One of them for new windows on Swift House, one of them for repainting at Bass House on Cello Blood. And they're also doing a courthouse for a survey that's ramping up. You guys filed a year and a half ago, approved a contract for that survey. What the survey does is it does an inventory of all houses in that defined area, what year was the build, anything notable, should be landmark, is eligible for state, federal, what have you, which kind of opens up tax credit for property owners. That was supposed to be done in September, but through the COVID, the state commissioned a one-year extension for everyone. They have already reviewed the draft once of the survey. Now the commission will be reviewing or revise draft, and after the commission reviews it, it'll come to city council probably in December. So you guys will be able to see that survey. The taxes, about seventy pages, the survey is about six hundred. So I will be giving you highlights of it, so anyone wants to read six hundred pages of the survey. So that's just one out of historic preservation. I still work for Popper Row. They've had a couple cases right now, they have a case in rescue squad that's rezoning their property so they can sell it. It's own business, although it's a bar in Adland, and again, the banks aren't providing mortgages, if the zoning is not correct, so they're having a hard time selling it, and now they have to rezone it back to Ad, and we're gonna get it to move on the market. I still do scanning for the clerk's office, so we have a large format scanner, I can scan and print documents of works, three, nine, four. We'll need split, I continue doing that for the recorder's office, and interact with all the companies of D's and stuff, I'm researching for three little letters, seven, eight, nine. So it's a nice mutual beneficial agreement that we have. The census is all done, finally, yay. We did great, we did four percent higher response rate than we did in two thousand and ten. I'm surprised that they didn't have been online only, and us being a rural community, language barriers, elderly, and we couldn't get into the high-rise buildings and the nursing homes to help. I thought that we would actually get hit pretty hard, but we did get them, they're part of the community. And I represented the cities, the city and the Chamber Trump retreat on the thirty. That was a great turnout, I think it was about six hundred candy bags I handed out. Still working with the county on the bike tax grant. I know Jeff Carlisle mentioned it, Brett mentioned it, he's been as part of that grant, there's the manager and Weber, we all have to participate in it, so we've been doing our Weber. And I'm working with the Region One Plan Council on a local food grant. And then Signature Region One, we're still fleshing out the comp plan. It was supposed to start a while ago, and it was delayed for various reasons. Finally got going, because COVID hit, and Region One isn't doing it towards a meeting, so I haven't really had anything to present to plan commission, haven't had anything to present to you guys, because I try not to just give you boring documents, I'd rather have people presenting, carry answered questions, and just giving you stuff to read. So there's two chapters that are on the third revision, but we do have a meeting of tomorrow to try to get like a status update, and more we do, we'll compare, because COVID didn't let them off, but yet we still need to make sure everyone is informed and participating in what it's supposed to be. So I'll keep that one updated on the map. Any questions?
Questions for Gina? Hearing none, thank you very much. So next, we'll have a building department update. Mr. Countryman?
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of October, we issued one hundred and twenty-two permits, twenty-one of those were commercial, residential, one hundred and one for a cost breakdown of about two and a half million dollars in value of construction. Some highlights, Gina already addressed a few of them. We did issue a permit, the chamber is moving to two hundred block.
Right behind us, next to the Barbber Shop.
Bowdoin Sematary's under plan review, the Historical Museum's getting a roof done, eight fifty-seven Landmark is doing a pallet racking system out there, and also a very large solar panel for the roof. And Becky was kind enough to get us a credit card machine so we can pay. About it, any questions?
I think questions for Mr. Countryman about the building department report. Thank you, sir. Next up, under Public Works, number three, unfinished business, stormwater utility implementation phasing is on the table. I suspect we're gonna leave it on the table unless anyone requests for it to be taken off. Brings us to number four, Public Works new business, and first up under A is a Public Works update. Mr. Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. In addition to our agenda items that we have tonight to discuss, our branch pickup program continues. This week, we're on the southwest side of town. Leaf collection is in full swing. This week, we're supposed to be on the south side of town. I don't think we got through all the north side, so in typical fashion, we're playing catch-up, but we'll be leapfrogging week to week, back and forth, until all these are picked up, or Mother Nature shuts us down, one or the other. So, so far, the weather's been really good, and hopefully that continues. Our annual snow meeting is coming up next Wednesday for all of our Public Works employees that are involved in snow removal operations, and we put together snow booklets, little programs for that, and a copy of those will be in each of the aldermen's packets, city council packet, for next Monday night's meeting. So once you get those and you look through them, if you have any questions, please let me know. In addition to that, our new snow blower arrived early. We got, it was delivered to us this afternoon, so hopefully that's a good sign. Maybe Mother Nature will see that we have that and decide not to have us use it this year, that would be a wonderful thing. But in any case, it did, it did show up early. Originally, it was projected to be here not till the end of January, February, so we have possession of it today, and training will be taking place shortly on that piece of equipment. In addition to that, a little update from the wastewater treatment plant. In two thousand and nineteen, ComEd offered a strategic energy management program for Chicago-area wastewater treatment plants. They were looking to, for ten plants, two, two-year program to lower their energy footprint using the existing equipment at the plant. Our plant, along with DuPage County, Fox Metro, Glenbard, Jacobs, Yorkville Bristol, North Shore, Elmhurst, New Lenox, and Woodridge, Woodridge, were chosen to participate in that program. And basically, we were, all the participating agencies, there's a series of workshops that we have to attend, and we work with Cascade Energy, who is a consulting firm that ComEd hired, brings in to review all plant operations for all the participants, to identify and implement energy savings projects, and to track our energy performance. In the first year of the program, our facility had the largest percentage energy savings at nine point six percent, with the average of all participants at six point eight percent. We have received two thousand dollars in incentives based on our first-year results, and we are on track for another two thousand dollars in incentives for our second, second year results. To date, we have saved nearly three hundred thousand kilowatt-hours of electricity through the program, which basically reduces our annual energy costs at the wastewater treatment plant by about seventy-five hundred dollars based on our current electrical rates. And good news, due to the success of the program, ComEd has indicated they're gonna extend the program for another year. So I don't know if that means additional incentives, but at least we'll have that continued workshopping and networking, and to come up with other ways and means that we can continue to lower our energy footprint. That's all of the update I have without our items on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Anderson concerning his update? Hearing none, that brings us to item B, the Southwest Elevated Tank Expansion Joint Replacement Water Department.
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet, we've opened our bids for the replacement of the expansion joint in the riser pipe, in the riser pipe of the Southwest Tower, and then corresponding structural improvements that go along with that. We received four bids, a low bid being from Jetco Limited in the amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. The replacement is part of the rehab of the Southwest Tower. We've got a total budget of four hundred and forty thousand dollars for the rehabilitation, which also includes blasting and recoating the painting of the exterior of the tank, as well as the wet, interior wet portion of the tank. That work will be done in the spring. I would recommend approval of the low bid from Jetco in the amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars for the replacement of the expansion joint in the Southwest Tower riser pipe. And we will pay for this work from the Water Department Capital Fund, sixty-one, seventeen, eighty.
May I have a motion of that effect, please?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Fleury, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Alderman Reblow, questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
Snow has a question.
Please proceed.
I'm a little concerned about the last bid. I realize, I mean, that bad boy is almost five times higher than the one just above it, so are we missing something, or is Jetco missing something in this?
No, the, the, the expected range of pricing was between twenty and thirty, so we're not sure what the last bid was, was looking at.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Furerton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Radcliffe? Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion has passed unanimously.
Next up, under item, item B is the Logan Avenue, ordinance authorizing the institution of eminent domain proceedings with respect to nine fifty-three Logan Avenue. A copy of the ordinance was included in your packet. I was finally able to talk to the property owner of nine fifty-three Logan Avenue, and in polite terms, he advised me that he did not want to work with the city in the purchase of this property. Hence, you have the ordinance in front of you to proceed with eminent domain to acquire the, the, it's about a foot and a half of width of property that we need to establish our sixty-six feet of right-of-way. And again, we need this right-of-way in order to have our ADA, meet our ADA requirements for clearances for sidewalk and utilities.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Reblow, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Fleury. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have a question.
Okay, Alderman Freeman, you have the floor.
Thank you. Brett, going off of resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash two thousand and twenty, I didn't see this address on here. I see nine twenty-three, nine twenty-five, but I don't see nine fifty-three. And I had a, I had a question about the amounts too. I meant to ask last week, the square feet to be obtained on this Exhibit A, like, I get that one hundred and ninety-seven point fifty-nine square feet on ten fifty-four Logan Avenue is comparable to the price we're paying for one hundred and ninety-seven square feet at ten fifty-three Logan Avenue. But three hundred and seventy-four square feet is almost double that on ten seventeen to ten twenty-three, but the price is roughly close to the same, and even at... And even at, um, ten oh seven Logan Avenue, it's two hundred and ninety-two square feet, but it's only nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. So I just was a little confused about that.
Um, I'll address the first question first, Alderman Freeman. This is Mike. The resolution authorizing the purchase was a separate resolution that was passed several meetings ago before the one that did the, the several properties that were approved last week. That was because those properties, everybody was in agreement and you authorized the execution of agreements. We previously did a resolution authorizing the purchase on the properties before you this evening because we pretty much figured he was gonna say no. Um, and the process that we have to use in eminent domain proceeding is to first have the resolution approving the purchase and saying the purchase price, which is done by the appraisals, which is, uh, what we'll get into next. And then once he does refuse that, which he has now, we come back with an ordinance approving the, uh, institution of eminent domain proceedings. So you did pass a resolution with respect to this property, but it was done separately from the other properties. With respect to the prices, those prices are actually, uh, obtained through a licensed real estate appraiser in the state of Illinois. Um, we have to pretty much utilize those appraised values that a licensed appraiser gives us. Um, the way generally eminent domain works, and you use that when you're buying property because you may end up there. Um, the appraiser sets the price and as long as you are offering what that appraiser thinks is the fair market value, then under the, uh, eminent domain act, you've made a good faith offer to purchase the property. Of course, you may end up in disputes if there ever was litigation between the appraisers. One appraiser might say it's worth more, another one less. Appraisers come out with different amounts. Um, why the amounts are different on these properties, we'd have to ask the appraiser. But my guess is some of the properties are of a higher value because of the type of commercial enterprise on the property, things like that.
Yeah, I was gonna add, there's, there's basically two components when the appraisals are done for the properties. The value of the property itself. And like the city attorney said, depending on what it's used for, if it's a residential property versus commercial property, that's a significance difference in, in value of that property. And then not only do they determine the value of those properties, but then they also have to determine the damage to the remainder of the properties. And that's figured into it. So depending on how much is taken, if there's, if there's items on the property that have to be addressed, uh, those things are also accounted for such as signage, fencing, other things that are within the property to be acquired, then those values, those details have to be worked out, worked out as part of that process as well. So there's, like I said, there's the two components of the appraisals, which is why you'll see the varying values, the variance in values and, and pricing on those appraisals.
Okay, so is nine fifty-three, is that part of Woodrose or is that a residential?
That's a separate residential lot.
Okay.
With a rental property.
Any additional?
Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Who, who is that? Alderman Porter, please proceed.
Okay Brent, uh, just a couple of questions here. Uh, I know you told us in square footage how much this property they're taking, but can you tell me how much that translates to in feet from, like, feet from the, uh, the sidewalk, how much are we taking? And also, is this the only property that we're gonna need to use eminent domain for?
Uh, second part of the question, yes, this is the only one, this is the only parcel that we will need to use eminent domain to acquire. As far as the width, I believe on this one, we're looking at anywhere from a foot and a half to two and a half feet across the frontage.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional questions or com-
Alderman Snow has a question.
Alderman Snow, please proceed.
So in the, uh, world of this intimate domain, what happens to, um, if there's a lien holder, a gay mortgage or anything on the property? Are they notified of this during the process or was just the, um, proposed taxpayer, um, that's associated with it?
No, as, in fact, I've actually ordered title for all the parcels that we're acquiring. One of the things we'll try to do for the ones that are agreeing to sell us the property. If there's a lien holder of record, a mortgage company, what have you, uh, we try to get them to release that small sliver of property from the lien if we can. With respect to the eminent domain proceeding, um, I will actually have to, i-if that title report shows there's lien holders, that lien holder will have to be named as a defendant in the lawsuit and they'll be brought into court so that we can extinguish that lien as part of the proceedings.
Does that answer your question? Alderman Snow. Any other questions or comments concerning the motion? Yes, Alderman Fleury.
So I know you said that you briefly talked to the property owner. Do you know, um, why he would be not willing to do this and then knowing that the next step is eminent domain?
I'll defer to the city attorney for that one.
We have, in, Mr. Fenzel owns several properties around town. And in the past, we've had property maintenance violation issues with his properties. So we've had to cite him and bring him to court on other matters before.
Alderman Arivolo.
Since we're using eminent domain, does he forfeit the purchase price or are we still gonna send him a check to be fair? It's just a, even though we're using eminent domain, are we giving him a check?
Eminent domain actually requires us to buy the property. The way it works is you first try to buy it on a consensual sale. If they don't do that, we are required to file suit because as you know, the U.S. Constitution prohibits a government from taking somebody's property without just compensation. So when they can't agree to it, you bring it to court, the judge determines the just compensation after evidence and testimony heard usually from appraisers. So we'll have to have our appraiser come in and raise, uh, their right hand and pay them to do that. And they'll tell the judge what they think the property is worth. Uh, the defendant can bring in their own appraiser if they want to. Um, probably not worth it for them to do that, but they could. And then the judge decides what the value is worth based upon that evidence. Um, and at that point, assuming we still want to buy the property, we then tender that check out of the circuit clerk and they pay the defendant or sometimes you're able to do it directly to the defendant themselves. And the judge either orders them to issue title or the judge issues a judicial deed.
I, I have another question.
Alderman Freeman, please proceed.
Um, so Attorney Drowa, is this, um, is this something that you are going to litigate for us?
Yes.
And once, um, this guy gets paperwork saying that this is going to court and it might cost him attorney fees, does he have the option of then changing his mind?
Yes, to both questions.
Okay.
Would anyone else have a question concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will when your name is called signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Brings us to item D, Brownfields Update Path Extension. Director Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, memo in your packet, a little update on the Brownfields project, um, and correspondingly the, the Bellwoodir Ponds project. Uh, work as of today, the majority of work in the high school pond, uh, portion of the project has been completed. Unfortunately, if the rain would stay away for just a little bit longer, we could get that all wrapped up soon. But, um, the majority of that work is done and all of the material that was, that was excavated as part, part of that portion of it has been placed, uh, on the Brownfield site. Uh, they will be looking to start, um, the Bellwood portion of that project, uh, in the next, uh, upcoming days here shortly. Um, one of the items that still remains to be done on the Brownfield site is the extension of the multipurpose path from Main Street to Bob's Park. And that path is, will be considered as part of the cap for that property. The original plan was for, uh, the path to be constructed with our street department personnel. We were gonna utilize our millings, our street mill, overlay millings that are result, byproduct result of our overlays that we do every year. And then we would be doing our own paving of that path. Uh, however, with the COVID, effects of COVID on our department, uh, this summer, uh, the fact that we have, um, our branch pickup ongoing and our leaf collection in full swing now, trying to wrap up our other projects that we've got out there, um, we really don't have the time to, uh, be constructing on this path. Therefore, I, um, requested a proposal from Fisher Excavating, who is our pond contractor and is also supplying the cap and doing the cap portion of the Brownfield project, uh, to ex, to, uh, construct our fifteen-inch asphalt millings base for the path. Um, they will be using our, our millings. They will just be hauling, transporting, moving, compacting those millings, constructing that base for the path. We will still utilize our personnel to pave it, uh, in the spring. Uh, but at least we will be able to get this portion of the cap done. Uh, the price that they came back with, fifteen dollars and sixty cents a square yard to do that work is quite reasonable. Uh, total estimated cost is twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. And this work will be paid for with our Brownfield grant. Therefore, I would recommend approval of the change order to the Bellwoodir Ponds contract for the construction of the asphalt millings path base at a cost of fifteen dollars and sixty cents a square yard. And again, that cost will be paid for from the Brownfield grant.
May I have a motion to approve?
Snow will make that motion.
Snow approves, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Arivolo, seconds, questions or comments, further discussion?
Brent, uh, this is Alderman Snow. Would it be possible to get a diagram of where the path's coming in and out of?
Sure, I can include the map. I'll put a map in, uh, included in the packets, uh, for the next meeting. But basically it's gonna line, it's gonna line up. It'll come across, uh, across Main Street at the bridge, at the end of the bridge where the, the gravel path will, we'll have to freshen up the path that goes by the old Piggly Wiggly Building where the Salvation Army is now. Uh, there is a, a, a gravel-based path there that the Park District put in. Park District does have an easement across that property for the path. So actually that, uh, that portion of it, it'll come across Main Street there. And then it'll go across Meadow Street in line with the existing sidewalk return, um, at Cross from Bob's Park. But I'll include a map of the, uh, of the Brownfield property, uh, in the package.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, will when your name is called signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe? Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to item E, Capital Improvement Program Project Schedule. Director Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, memo in your packet, um, as you know, it's budget season already. Seems like we just got done, uh, but it's upon us again. And so one of the things that we need to do is outline our capital improvement, uh, program and the project schedule, uh, to expend those funds. In our upcoming, uh, projects that are on our current capital improvement plan includes the West Harrison Reconstruction Project, that has an estimated price tag of two point seven million, and the Fifth Avenue Storm Sewer Detention and Relief Line Project, which has an estimated cost of four point six million dollars. Given the need for the surface improvements to both Fifth Avenue and Allen Street, uh, Washington School being immediately adjacent to that project, and also the capability to reduce the frequency and the severity of flooding in the neighborhood, I would recommend that the Fifth Avenue Storm Sewer Detention and Relief Line Project be scheduled for construction in FY twenty-three after completion of the Logan Avenue Rehabilitation Project. And FY twenty-three means we'd be shooting for year twenty twenty-two with Logan Avenue hopefully being done next year, twenty twenty-one. We are utilizing with our current, uh, capital improvements that we have outstanding, including the Logan Avenue Rehab, our Bellwoodir Pond Project, our Sixth Street Low Flow Channel and Lawrenceville Papa Grove Road Intersection improvements, which hopefully will be done in the next week and a half or so. Uh, we are utilizing two point one eight million dollars of grant funds to complete those projects, which leaves us that same amount of money available in capital funds to put towards our next project. Uh, again, and I'm recommending that to be the Fifth Avenue Project. And the components of the Fifth Avenue Project, uh, there was a map that was attached to the memo. If you wanna look at that map, it includes the installation of a seventy-two inch equivalent storm sewer relief line. It'll intercept the existing storm sewer system at Seventh Street, Fifth Avenue. And that line will run down the dark blue color, um, all the way to the green retention area, the darker green retention area, uh, behind, uh, the Franklin Wire property. Uh, it will then, uh, through that detention facility, uh, where the circle is, there'll be a railroad crossing there. We're all across underneath the railroad tracks. And the two blue highlighted, uh, properties, the storm sewer will pass through those properties to get to the river. Uh, footnote to note is the, the larger blue parcel, uh, on the, um, south side of Locust Street. That is the offices of CES, uh, the engineering firm that we're, we are proposing to utilize for this project. And the property on the north side of Locust Street is also owned by, um, it, it was, uh, Kevin Bungies, the, the owner of CES. That was his father, father, father's house. Um, and unfortunately he is now in a nursing home. Uh, so, uh, that is the route that, uh, we can utilize in order to get this relief line in, uh, that portion of it. Now, in addition to the storm sewer work, uh, the red portion of the map, that will be another extension down that, that, uh, Allen Street, uh, from Seventh Avenue to Fifth Avenue. And there'll also be corresponding road improvements once we get those storm sewers in and we'll be able to reconstruct the roadways, uh, for both Fifth Avenue and that portion of Seventh Street. It does also include the, um, detentionary, detention area, uh, adjacent to Franklin Wire. We had had discussions with Franklin Wire already. Uh, original discussion was the entire green area. Uh, they came back and indicated to us that they do have future expansion plans and those plans will be going to the west. So that's why the lighter green area is not being considered at this point in time. They have indicated that they are in favor of allowing detention to be utilized, uh, on the, adjacent to the railroad tracks in that brighter green section. Um, the project will require, um, permitting of the norms, no, of the new storm sewer outlets to the Kishawaki River through the Corps of Engineers as well as a permit, uh, from the Union Pacific Railroad, uh, for a pipeline crossing of their right-of-way. Uh, attached to the memo was a proposal from CES in the amount of forty thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents to complete the preliminary engineering for this project. They have also included, uh, an alternate design fee of sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. That fee is provided in case the Union Pacific Railroad advises us that a tunneling design is needed to complete the crossing of the right-of-way. Um, their policies have changed somewhat from, uh, the last time we did the seventy-two inch crossing of the right-of-way was back in the late eighties, early nineties. Um, and their policies have changed since then. And anything that's over a forty-eight inch casing, they require to go through their engineering department. Uh, so, um, a part of the fees of the forty thousand will be to get the necessary information, supply that to the Union Pacific Railroad for them to advise us if we can go with what I'll call the standard permit, which is included in that forty thousand, four thirty-seven number or if we're gonna have to go through the tunneling aspect, which could be upwards of that sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollar number. Uh, I would recommend approval of the proposal from CES in the amount of forty thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents to complete the preliminary engineering for the Fifth Avenue Project. This work will be paid for from capital funds.
May I have a motion to that effect?
Snow will make that motion.
Motion by Snow, may I have a second, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second by Stevens. Questions, comments or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have a question.
Alderman Freeman, please proceed.
Okay Brent, um, I got out my south side stormwater binder. And, um, in August of twenty seventeen, um, we did, um, I have a, attached as a work order from Baxter and Woodman to update the hydraulic model of, um, well, it says we've reviewed the project from CES. They've proposed the installation of a seventy-two inch storm sewer relief line primarily along Fifth Avenue from Seventh Street to the Kishawaki River. And then we have a work order from Baxter and Woodman to update the hydraulic model of the basin by adding the relief line and updating the detention requirements. Um, we paid them thirty, we paid Baxter and Woodman thirty-one hundred dollars from our engineering line. We paid them 30, we paid Baxter and Woodman $3,100 from our engineering item at that time. My first question is, are, is this the same model that CES is going to go off of?
We are utilizing, yeah, that work was done then. Originally, with the Baxter and Woodman plan, they had called for a detention facility, and they showed it on School District property, and they had a sizing of the volume, did not have a pipe, did not have, contemplate the overflow, the additional 72-inch pipe connection to the river. Because of the geothermal field that's noted, and the locations noted on the plan sheet attached, that makes the installation of a detention facility there improbable at best to be able to do that. That's why we began looking at alternatives. That's when, in discussing the project with CES and the potential, that's when they identified the 72-inch relief line. So at that point in time, because Baxter and Woodman has the model, and the model done, we updated the model, put in the parameters of what, of the proposed 72-inch relief line, and if that would handle the flow requirements that was being projected, and if we, what options were available, if we had, A, no detention, or if we had detention, what, what possibilities exist? So when they ran that model, it basically came back and said, if we ran a 72-inch pipe from Seventh all the way to the river, we probably would not need any detention. But because of the cost difference in the railroad permitting process, we also looked at alternatives as far as if we did provide detention, then how, how much of a reduction in pipe size from the detention pond to the river could be done and still accomplish the goal of, of reducing the overall flow through that neighborhood through a hundred year storm event. So that's what that modeling was done at that point in time, and that's what's arrived at, and that part of that was included in the budget number that we put together for this project of the 4.6 million. That was all done back then to enter into that, to begin that process on a, on a budgeting standpoint, because we knew this was one of our capital improvement projects that were going to be done.
Okay. And then, November 2018, we had a work authorization from CES for the completion of the final design for the West Sixth Street Low Flow Channel. Are we still going to move forward with that? That goes from West Sixth Street to the Union Pacific Railroad tracks just south of Appleton? Are we still planning on doing that low flow channel, too?
Yes, we are, unfortunately, through the review process with the Corps of Engineers on that project, they have come back with a determination that it is, it is a partial, gosh, what's the term that they use? It is intermittent stream is what they've determined. So as such, we have to go through the permit process. In layman's terms, what that means is, they basically said, we could, we can excavate, we can do whatever we want with that channel as far as excavation goes. But as soon as we try to put something back in there, or create a working platform, if you will, we cannot do that without going through the permitting process. And a part of that permitting process is mitigation for the adverse impacts to this intermittent stream. Case in point, we were out there today, working, because it's been so dry, that we were out there removing cattails and stuff that had built up to clean things out, and by looking at it now, you would never know it was intermittent stream. So maybe I should have the Corps come back out and look at it today as opposed to when they did come. But, but they've already made that decision, so unfortunately, we've been going through the paperwork and, and the process that's required of us to do, because we'll probably have to do an individual permit for that project, and it's going to take longer than anticipated to come up with the alternatives that we have to do to comply with the regulations. So that is a work in progress, but yes, we fully intend to complete that project as well.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else?
Alderman Snow has a statement more than anything. So being in Ward Two where West Harrison resides, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, gee, you sure would like to have the West Harrison side done, but I know this is more important. So just tossing that out there as a case of humor.
Okay. Alderman Frank has a comment. Alderman Frank, please proceed.
Okay, thank you, Brent. Will this project help alleviate some of the flooding that's on 10th Street, on the south side of Washington School, up to Pacemaker?
I'll have to look at that to see how far those impacts will go. I know the immediate area, Seventh and Seventh, is going to be the direct, the direct beneficiary of the, of this work. We'll have to do some more of the update of the modeling to see what the other impacts would be, especially, I'll have to look at 10th in particular.
There's no questions or comments?
And I guess I would like to add, you know, we have, like I said, we referenced the $2 million of, of capital funds, and of course, right now, the current price tag is at 4.6 million, subject to changes as engineering progresses on this project. So there's a balance there that we'll have to come back with. The financial manager and myself have been in discussions about how we're going to attempt to do that. The fact that it's going to be proposed to be in 2022 gives us some time, perhaps if there's grant funds available to fund, but we will be coming back to counsel with our recommendations on how to finance the remainder of that. And keep in mind, Alderman Snow is right, West Harrison is an important project, it's been on our list for a long time now. I would expect, hopefully, that that may be the next project done, we could line that up for 2024. But again, it'll have to depend on, on funding and how we're going to pay for it.
Director Anderson, would you remind us of what you're asking for here, please?
I would recommend approval of proposal from CES in the amount of $40,437.50 to complete the preliminary engineering for the Fifth Avenue Project.
All those in favor of approval, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Requested motion is approved unanimously, which brings us, since we've already had the health renewal approved, to Item Six, Adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Arivolo, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we are now adjourned.